Yep, we're good.
She says it's good, it's good.
Well, I'll let me see if I can.
When I have it home, it's a light on.
Yeah, see, it's moving.
It's moving.
It's not moving on my screen now. Yeah, it's frozen.
Do you want me to just unplug everything?
No, I don't think it's bad. I think I'll just restart this.
Let it go.
Alright, so uh six oh two, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Let everybody please join me for the what allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alright, we have a meeting minutes of December first. Push the board. Move by Jeff, we have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Nate. Any changes or amendments or tweaks or tunes through the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next up. We have public comments, any members of the public wish to comment?
Greg Whitmore, North Road. Let's see. So there's some documents I've been trying to track down, I'm hoping you can help me. Number one, I'm hoping you could provide me a list of schools without mask mandates that have more cases than any other school. I haven't been able to track that down. Probably doesn't exist, because we will look around the state, there's absolutely no difference whatsoever. I have been going through this baby right here. More than four hundred studies on the failure of compulsory COVID interventions. Within this, there are ninety-seven separate articles. These are not opinion pieces, these are scientific, peer-reviewed pieces that talk about the ineffectiveness of masks. I mean, it's a charade at this point. Nine about the failure and negative effects of mask mandates. And sixty-one articles about how masks are actively harming children. And there's been some really crushing ones coming out lately, particularly talking about students or children who have been born since the pandemic and how shockingly far behind they have fallen with just all of their general skills. And it's completely coming down to covering their faces, not letting them see facial expressions, having difficulty hearing, communicating. I mean, these are having real impacts on kids, real impacts. And nobody can point to actual proof that this is doing anything besides just people saying, hey, at least we're trying something, at least we're doing something, at least by you having that on it, showing you're complying. Well, it's 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 real physical damage. It's damaged mentally, it's damaged physically, and I mean, when's it gonna stop? When will it stop? I can't imagine when masking will stop at this point. I know when it could stop, as soon as you say, hey, they're not required. And you know what would change with the cases? Absolutely nothing. Because that's what we see in any school around the, not just the state, but the country. There is no difference whatsoever. And if you took the time to look into it, you'd come to the exact same conclusion. So I'm gonna forward this to all of you, I'll send you the link. I don't expect you to go through four hundred studies, but just with the the abstracts that are given, you can get the gist of it and then delve into the ones that you would like to see further. It's it's pretty eye-opening stuff. Not from, you know, what you would consider biased publications or anything like that, this is legitimate, peer-reviewed stuff, people. I mean, it's it's there. We can't just look at one side of things. We can't just put masks on kids just to say we're doing something, just to say we're blindly following recommendations. Because they'll recommend this stuff forever. I mean. Kids have the harshest restrictions of anyone. Why? Because they're little, we can push them around, right? We can make them do what we want. And if you don't want you-
You can try to wrap it up, Zach.
What's that?
You can try to wrap it up at the time.
We didn't say there was a time restriction.
It's been part of the policy all along.
I think we should say that, because that makes a big difference on how I'm going through this, alright? So, kids have the harshest restrictions overall, right? You know, because we can, we can threaten parents with your kid can't come to school if you don't do this. So what option do, what option do I have? Two working parents, where's my kid gonna go? Right? Well, I'm getting cut off here. How is how is high school choice not a a public discussion? Last time, it was, you know, we're 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 in negotiations period. I I think the public should know every single step of this and need to be completely transparent as to what's going on. I don't want this thing sprung on me all of a sudden at some meeting where you say, we picked this, too bad. Right? We we need to know what's going on at at every step of the way. And did somebody really ask last meeting, can man, can vaccines be mandated? Somebody asked that at the last meeting. Come on, people, we're better than this, alright? Well, if I'm out of time, that's it. So, looking forward to the next meeting where, according to what you talked about a few months ago, you're gonna discuss making masks optional again because everybody's been vaccinated to this point, right? Alright, thank you.
Sir, if you could forward that to us, I'd appreciate seeing that.
I will.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Did she wanna talk?
Oh, no.
Oh, sorry. My name's Bobby Anne Dossie, I live on Brown Road. Today, I got to visit our SAU fifty-three office at Pembroke Academy. I arrived at approximately ten nineteen AM and I was walking up the stairs and I saw a pleasant, free-faced receptionist. She hurried over to greet me and threw her mask on on her way. Patty Sherman came to say hello as well, I appreciate that, I know she had a meeting or something. Patty told me that masks were required in the public school building. When I asked why her staff can breathe freely at their desk, Sherman explained that they're allowed to take them off when they're sitting, but they're required to wear masks whenever they stand up. To me, that's a little funny, because why is it that our SAU is allowed to be free-faced while they're sitting, but our children at our public school, as well as our staff, are forced to wear suffocating devices at their desks? I'm asking you this not to point fingers at all, I was happy to see her smile at me and I was happy to see that she was breathing freely. I'm asking you to use common sense. Masks cause great physical and emotional issues for my children and myself, I'm not gonna lie. And I don't know how you can do it all, I don't know how you can do it all day, like, I don't. You already know this, I've already explained that to you. You also know that you do not have the right to enforce any harmful restraints on any other human being without their consent. You continue to force abusive protocols on our children and neglect to correct your actions. You can force your children to do whatever you'd like. Do you? I I'm all for that. Just don't tell me what to do with mine and for them to be forced to do that to get their tax-paid education, it breaks my heart. On November seventeenth, I submitted a right-to-know request for all board emails regarding face coverings at DCS. Today, twenty-eight days later, I was happy to go and review them. Although I purchased three hundred and twenty-four paid copied pages of these emails, more than half of them were duplicates and some of them were not even referencing the mask mandate at all. Out of all of the emails to the board that specifically discussed mask mandates at DCS from June eighth of this year, twenty twenty-one, to November seventeenth, when I requested the copies, forty-two emails requested masks be optional at our public school, forty-two. Thirty-two exactly asked to enforce the mandate. I was a little confused by that number because continually our public is told that they're even. That, oh, it's it's completely even. That it's, you know, half of them want to optional, half of them want to mandate. If a majority is saying, hey, something's wrong, something's wrong, my kid is having severe trouble, some, and it's sad. Reading them was actually like, it broke my heart for that too and seeing that a majority of the people that asked for it to be mandated didn't even have children in the school, that even hurt me more, but anyway. I appreciate all your hard work and that is, I mean, it's pretty gruesome. It was a lot of work for you to get that to me. Just, please, just start thinking outside the box and make your own decisions. And thank you for your time.
Alright, agenda review. You have any changes, Patty?
Um, I just wanted to note that there was an earlier version of the agenda, if anyone had the older version that we inadvertently put the mask mandate on there, it was four F, the agenda was revised, but I I think it was posted first. So, that was intended to be for the January fifth agenda, so if anyone is out there with a four F on their agenda that says mask mandate, that was a mistake and it was reposted and corrected. Under informational items, we should have the matrix. Um, and under policy G B C V, that the amendments are not ready to make.
So are we tableing policies?
Yes, just, well, just that one.
Just the G B C V? I saw Andy's hand first, but I'll come back to you, Nate, go ahead, Andy.
Uh, if we could, I don't know if it would be in place of where the masks was on the the immediate business, but some sort of board FAQ that we could publish on our website.
Do you wanna put that in for? Andy, you'll lead the charge on that one?
Sure.
Hey. Just to, I'm not, I guess I'll hear more, but I wonder whether that's better just as informational, because I'm not sure what we're getting at with that, but I've, I'll wait till then and see how it goes.
Yeah, okay. I think I think Andy's got an idea, let's uh, let's hear it.
Yeah, no, great, in a similar way, I have, I think I brought this up last meeting, but talking about our self-eval sort of process and thinking about as a board, how do we start to get into that? We've tried to decline to put a policy in place, but is there, is there time for putting that on the agenda today? Or do we just come back to informational, wait till next meeting? Open to whatever the board thinks.
Thoughts on that, so that would be. And we hit, what's the board?
I need to, I wanted to slice and dice it, I just haven't had the time to.
Jeff said it's a little weight issue. You wanna push it out?
Wait until next meeting.
Next meeting, we have.
So, can we do that?
Yeah, it sounds like.
The meeting, so the next meeting, we are planning for the building committee to consume a fair bit of time.
That's fine, and it could be, it could be later.
Okay, so if we shoot for that change order-
I'll keep it on my agenda list.
We got places on around twenty-seven, we're getting there.
Alright, and then I just have one other informational that I-
Okay, what do you got?
It'll be informational. Or you have it, the other-
Informational for Nate, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
No, I don't.
Alright, and we do have a non-public patent direction, we're going under smaller's L and C.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Alright, uh, do you have a couple of, any other agenda review items? Okay, so we have a couple of consent items. Those would be invoices from Dale, which should have new packets. So we have high school transportation and elementary transportation, so I'll go ahead and make a motion, look for a motion. There's the approval payment to Dale for thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-six cents. That would be for seventeen days of busing in November for the high school, for the two buses.
Aye.
Motion by Nate, seconded by?
Second.
Gigi, any discussion regarding that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, vote for motion to approve the November invoice to Dale or from Dale for the elementary transportation. That would be sixteen days at thirty-three thousand forty-eight dollars. That would be for the six buses we had in November and sixteen school days. So vote for motion for that.
Aye.
Seconded by Andy, seconded by Gigi, additional discussion?
This may be worth saying that we're able to transport the students that we need to get to school, or maybe it's a question. Have we been able to transport the students?
I was gonna say, we, I don't think I-
Has the school in Dale been able to transport the students that we need to get to school on buses? Without, I guess.
You're asking, is it working right now?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
That's what Andy was asking.
Yeah, we still, we still have quite a they they talk about two complete rounds and then probably like a half a one. So, Brian's still estimating about a hundred cars a day in the morning and in the afternoon. There is some room on the bus, I've not gotten a request for a student on the bus quite some time.
And we're doing one runs, I think, at the last.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
Is it, is it worth, I know it's kind of an odd time of the year, but historically Dale's given us bus rider numbers? Is it worth at least asking to see if the buses are full or empty or somewhere in between?
For the high school as well?
For the high school as well?
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna ask her or do I?
Mm-hmm.
You can do it. Thank you.
I can do that, sure.
So, whenever that comes back, we'll just forward it into our informational.
Are we at risk of losing the driver? I know that
Oh, that's a good point.
One of our drivers was supposed to be temporary until they found a permanent.
Yep, they were, the, they, we had a, there was a snowbird, he's left, someone else was hired, came from already trained and it was just a swat, so Tom is at Dale.
So am I losing anybody, I think is the question.
Yeah, no, we didn't lose anyone.
Someone went to Florida, but someone that does seasonal work left that, was done that position and came on, yeah. So we're out.
So we're covered?
Yeah.
We're covered.
Well, that's cool. Alright, anything else regarding, I guess, Dale? Nope, alright. Uh, so we have a review of correspondence, so we talked about it the last couple of meetings. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, all in favor of the thirty-three thousand forty-eight dollars?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, Nate.
That was only one of them, did we put on both of them?
We were- Okay, thank you, Nate. Alright, so we do, we talked at the last meeting about moving emails and attaching to the minutes, and we talked about kind of trying to codify it. Because of when the emails get in and when they get forwarded, I think the easiest way to do it is simply take as I receive the emails that are addressed to the board, I'll forward them to Patty, I think Patty's gonna add some additional stuff to this as well. But I'll forward it to Patty, and the thought process, quite frankly, is any emails that are in the packet this week that attach to the meeting minutes for the following, for the following meeting. That will also allow Patty and off the community to make sure there isn't any student-specific information that needs to be edited or redacted out. I did ask about redacting the sender's names and that is something that Patty said we cannot do. So if you receive an email from person A, the email will will show that it came from person A, but the student-specific information will be removed.
Um, yes, so I, um, I think it's gonna be much easier for us to keep up, to do it every two weeks, so regardless of whether or not you publish some of your minutes, I'm gonna ask that you send them to me, so that way I'm only gonna get one from Zach. But if it's addressed to the board, if you get something that was sent just to you and not the rest of the board, send that to me. We're gonna print them and I'm gonna redact, redact the student information, because we don't have the resources for the hours and hours that it takes and, you know, I got, I got all of them forwarded from you and I had to print them all and then the staff just had to read them all and tab all the areas that she thought might need redaction and then I had to take a black marker and it's, it was a lot of of work and a lot of hours and I, we we just can't let them pile up like that. So things can be do it this way, there won't be duplicates, it will be, the work will will be done as we go along and then we'll have them and-
And I certainly know that I felt like I was bombing the S U's office when I was going through my stuff.
All the budget binders that are being done for all five towns and all the budgets and, yeah, it's just, um-
So, I'm trying to-
I got a, I'm sorry, I I'm, I didn't wanna interrupt, I forgot to tell you, I got a, I think it's your document. Like, it's not an email.
Oh, stuck in there?
And I just didn't, you know, a binder, I don't know.
Sorry.
Thank you. Alright, so.
So, just to, and to finish up, so that you know when I'm redacting, we've had some really scary situations in the S A U with children and parents and split homes, so I probably go more overboard than I need to, but I go so far as to, if someone says, you know, my son, I cross it off, so that there's no, you don't even know if that parent has a daughter, a son, you know, a third grader or a fourth grader, there's any personal information, so you know, you know, they may say my child and that's fine, they have, they have a child in the school, but I really do try to protect confidential information and let, you know, so that people don't even know how many children you have, what grades they're in, that kind of stuff.
I would certainly give discretion to the superintendent to withhold any emails from the minutes that you felt it was
Yeah, I I redacted for the matter, so that all the content's there.
Necessary, but- I know there's potentially some situations and you may be aware of it, we certainly wouldn't be. And so I would be confident in that, but so I think the first question is, is, does the board, does the board wanna start attaching emails to the minutes? And if so, are we comfortable doing it in that fashion?
I guess the question I have is-
That would be, initially, my thought is, that would specifically be emails addressed to the board as a whole.
Yeah, you had, you had said individual ones, we wouldn't be forwarding individual ones.
Um, it's, I mean, it's up to you, any email to the board is subject to write to now, so it just, it depends on how what the board wants to do, but I, and in terms of what you wanna publish, I mean, you don't have to publish anything unless there's a request. But in terms of managing the volume right now, I mean, typically it's not this high. But you're getting a lot of emails.
Yeah, so I think, to keep it simple, if we want emails addressed to the board or to Patty, that's-
Zach will do it.
Sorry, yeah, let Zach forward them to Patty. That way, we have one point, I think it's gonna get overwhelming if I've got emails, what constitutes an email? If it's regarding something to do with the building committee from the architect or from someone on the market, the marketing page, right?
So, why don't we start with the emails to the boards? Does that work?
Yeah, that's a good point, you've got committee work, you're getting a lot right now about the, yeah.
So, so, let's start with emails to the board, we forward them, they can redact, attach them to the minutes. And then frankly, at that point, if they're requested, anybody they're requesting can be directed to the minutes and they're all there. And then, you know, they're, they are what they are.
I was just gonna say, like, you know, for the public, and I, I'm, I feel like I'm speaking for all of us, is that we want to, you know, we want to be able to, to respond to constituents or at least to be able to have them know that, yes, we've received your email and, and, you know, we will address the, you know, we heard you and will address, you know, those topics or whatever. It it's always to me, you know, it's such a, um, an interesting thing, being elected official, but then having this kind of like weird system where you can't, you can't really freely respond to someone. And I think it's important for people to understand that, like, we just don't, it's it's difficult to freely, like, oh, well, just take back, you know, and answer to that particular email. That, um, that we have to make sure that we are following, um, lawfully our correspondences and, and, um, how it plays out in terms of making sure that, you know, we we don't have a, a, a meeting by mistake and so on. So I just wanted to say that publicly, that it's not a lack of wanting to um, communicate with the community.
You might, you might like to do a canned response, but you, but you, you know, do a little paragraph that explains that and then when you get an email, you have to retype it every time, but you could just, you know, informationally let people know, like, you know, thank you, I I received your email. This is the loop, you know, handle correspondence and then it's pre-written and then you can feel like at least you responded.
Yes, just a thought. And that, that's, actually, I was putting some out that particular way, like, thank you, this is, this is the, this is the-
Confirming receipt.
Protocol, yes, because otherwise, if, you know, people send an email, they may not pay, you know, they missed the meeting, they didn't see the minutes and then they're like, I emailed them, I didn't hear a thing back. So, and I, and I know Zach, you were answering, you were-
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is a canned response, it's saying, if you're emailed, the board will review it in the next meeting.
Yes.
And that's, that's what you get. I'm not an obolist, I certainly have no time to spend an hour or two a day responding to a lot of emails. And quite frankly, my opinion is irrelevant with us in this case.
Right.
It doesn't do us any good. Alright, so, matter at hand, Nate?
Oh, let's, we'll settle this one a little bit.
Okay, matter at hand, are we attaching the emails that are addressing the board to the meeting minutes, yes or no?
Uh, just a point of clarification, so emails up to a certain date before the meeting, and then they get added to the following notes?
If they're in the binder? Yeah, so basically, if they make it into the binder, they go into the following meeting's minutes. If they haven't made it into the binder for this meeting, then they end up in the next binder and they go-
So theoretically, a citizen would email the board and may, we may or may not talk about that topic for two weeks.
It it could be, if you email the board on Tuesday morning before a meeting and I'm running around like a chicken with my haircut cut off, I may not look at your email until Wednesday or Thursday in that case. So if that's the case, then you kind of miss that meeting slot, but that's why my thought process is, as I get them, I typically shoot them up to Patty anyway, but if they're in the binder, they slide into the following minutes. Because really, it's when they're in the binder is when they become part of our, they're part of it when we get them, but I mean, that would, that would-
And there's gonna, there'll be a lag time too. You'll, we can mention, but you, well, you have the monies and they're emailed to you.
Right.
Um, but I, I need to be able to print them in the doc, so it's gonna, there may be a little bit of lag delay in the minutes.
Redacted. There may be cases where one that ends up outside of a minute or something, but the the general gist of it is, I'd rather it be published and have to set a minutes two weeks late than spending five hours on a Tuesday forwarding emails. So, that's part of my solution.
So, the redacting seems to be the time-consuming endeavor.
It, I don't think it'll be as bad with only getting one, you know, when-
I card it off, yeah.
Where, where I'm going with this is-
Yeah, I mean, but I got them from all of you and I can't, we couldn't review them and pull out, like, oh, we read this two hundred pages ago, that's a duplicate
Right.
or, I mean, this is gonna be much easier for everyone involved, people want them and me.
Where I'm going with this, can we ask the community if they're, if they're emailing the board, if it's about a policy or a topic and they're either in favor of it or against it, can, can it be the subject line, like, in favor of, does that make-
I don't think, I don't think you'll get enough of a broadcast on that for people to realize, hey, I'm sending you an email, you need to put the subject line with the email, I just-
I'm just thinking from a-
I think if it's, I I think it would be, it's easier for Patty, or will, it will be easier, I think, for Patty to manage a very slow triple than a fire hose.
Okay. Good, I'm done.
Okay.
I, I just have one last clarification, so they go in the minutes and, and then so then we don't discuss them or like, what makes it this, what makes the decision, so we receive two correspondences?
So, so like, for example, today we have two emails that have come in. Uh, one, both regarding masks, one, one proponent, one against, and as we have, you know, we'll take it up next, our next meeting, we'll discuss some mask mandate, appreciate the responses and then those two emails get attached to the minutes for this current meeting and then anybody that wants to see what somebody said, has to go and read that.
Okay. Got it.
Right? Right, so, are we attaching emails to the minutes? Do I need a motion or should it be consensus of the board?
Can we make the notice?
Consensus of the board is yes?
Yes.
Okay, and I would like the board to give discretion to the superintendent. In the event there is something in an email that you feel should have been published, then you, you have the discretion to withhold something. Is the board okay with that?
Yes. Agreed.
Okay.
On the email topic. I'm not in the habit of keeping my emails for very long in my, in my box. We clearly had a right-to-know request a few weeks ago. So all of the ones that read them, I reported, I forwarded. Does that expire at some point? Can I start deleting them again? Do I, can I go clean out my mailbox again?
Yeah, but so if you, it's really, you made the right-to-know request, you, if you have a request that went back to January and you have those emails, it's against the law to delete them, but once you turn them over, you're fine.
So now I can delete the ones that I already forwarded?
Yeah.
Okay.
And no longer am I in there, but there's somebody else that has them.
They're in the record and we have them and you're fine.
Okay. And that's, request was as of that date, it's not an ongoing request, in perpetuity.
Correct. Correct.
Cool. Anything else regarding emails? Awesome. Alright, uh, who is walking us through the fire panel, updating future plans?
Good question.
Alright, you already, you already grabbed the mantle? I think we're all in, I think we're all in. Got it?
I just have the latest email.
This thing, you gotta put in.
Here.
Who's doing it? So, fire panels installed, everything is operational, we're waiting for the chief to do his final inspection and hopefully at that point, we are complete backup in time.
Yes.
From there, the change order has been approved for the fire protection engineer to do the additional engineering work to fully- to fully update the system in this building, should be uh, both in March, uh, lead us in that direction.
Well, we have to do it either way.
Yes.
Yes, so the design work's being done, if we plan out for an addition, it becomes part of the bond. And that raises whole work.
I highly doubt the, correct me if I'm wrong, but I doubt the bond funding will be in place and available to us to spend the two hundred fifty thousand to upgrade engineer?
I think you're gonna have to have a contingency in your warrant articles, that if the, if the N I camera broke, it's there now. If that's included as part of the bond and the bond fails, you still, I think what Jeff's getting at is, you still have to do the fire panel.
What, what I'm getting at.
Panel's up.
I mean, the redesign.
What I'm getting at is that we need to begin this work in April, May, and will the bond funding be in place to?
Well, we wanna start the installation, so say.
Yes, we will, we have to.
Oh, I thought we could wait till July first.
Thought we were clear to wait till July, we won't have money until July either way. And.
We should check with the chief, but they do their certification in for July first, right, as of July first?
Do you remember, I'm not sure.
The board.
You count, they count annually, but I don't remember what the dates are.
So, would the board be comfortable with me calling the chief and clarifying a few dates with him?
Just let him know that we'll, we're doing the design work, we'll try to be ready to go, but we may not have funding until July first.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
If the chief is okay with it.
If he's okay with it, right.
If he's okay with it, then right, that's.
Okay, I'll have a conversation with the chief on that detail, the design work has uh, been approved for engineers to start working.
I mean, you, if he's not okay with it, you could have, you could have a funding emergency, um.
Well, we, we, I mean, we have the reserve fund, and we can pull, I mean, we can theoretically pull the money out of the cap pool.
Empty the capital.
Empty the capital reserve fund or whatever, but the money's there instead.
And that will bring our bond cost down theoretically, because we were gonna give it back, but if we don't give it back,
It's not the point.
it will decrease against the bond.
Yeah, so it's, it should be net zero on that. And that.
It'd rather be cheaper, cuz we want to pay the interest on the bond.
Alright, I'll talk to the chief. Okay. Uh, board reports, no PTO?
Can I just search?
Sorry, oh, I'm sorry, that's not the wrap.
So that means that we are expecting to be all finished and square, right up to date, uh, safe in this building, four kids, uh, no, we are safe, I know we are safe, but without, without a, a fire watch at the moment.
We are safe, we're still. Alright.
Um, there is, that will be in the next week, two weeks?
That's realistic.
I think we're just waiting on scheduling with the chief now and uh.
They have to do an off-site.
An off-site, onsite.
Making sure everything communicates.
Okay.
Um, so chief and the alarm company need to know that everything's communicating back and forth, and then they'll have a fire watch, so we're just waiting for that to happen.
Okay. But the new panels up and running, and they did chase a bunch of demons out of the system, and replaced a bunch of gizmos and widgets, but it might be in the next two weeks.
Hope so.
I would think.
Just fight the holidays.
Okay.
Hope so.
Alright. Uh, F, Andy, I almost skipped you and I apologize, sorry.
You're good. I didn't know I was F.
Well, my, my report card looks a lot like it's agenda.
Uh, so I guess the best way to summarize um, would be to take something Gigi had said, which was, you know, how does the board handle correspondence and um, can't just apply to the emails, so I thought it would make sense to have some sort of FAQ document on the S A U's website um, underneath the Deerfield Board, where if we get uh, standard questions about uh, like an example would be like, where does, you know, my student go to high school, or um, you know, things about like, public comments, like, that you have a certain amount of time, and like, how, how does this work? Why does it do that? Um, that would be like one document that members of the public could go and see um, topics that might be of interest to them and get answers to them. Um, so I, I just thought that that might be helpful, and I didn't.
That's what, clear notes.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
I li, I like the public, I like the public comment um, thought, because it's, it's a school board policy, but you have how many school board policies and how many people really know
Right.
about the school board policies or where to find them, and that's something that public comments happens all the time.
Yeah, I think that's, certainly, we should, I think it's a good idea, I think we can have something on the S A U site, and possibly even something on the school site that just
So being a high school.
says, your, you, you, your ten heavy here questions, you know, you can get asked continually, and you can always update it. So.
And then those potential responses could be used as an email, so if somebody emailed just you, you've got a board-approved response that you could send to them, so it's not just confirming receipt, it's here, this is the answer to that, that the, the board has agreed, or whatever that, you know, you can send.
So why don't we, over the next couple of weeks, the next meeting's gonna be a bit of a.
Yeah, to follow, I'll, I could try to write something, I mean, give some examples, but.
I was gonna say, we just started, you know, and if anybody has anything that comes to mind, certainly just jot it down, and we can try to compile all this, but I think it's a valid thought.
And it wouldn't, to be, to be clear, it wouldn't be questions that like, Chris and the administration would like, it'd be specific things that we're responsible for.
Right, right.
Right. We're responsible.
Exactly.
Um, what if we try to have questions raised for the next meeting, I mean, we could just post, you know, them, unless we can each individually post our own to the meeting for the next meeting, if we got, just, we only need five minutes, so look at the questions, and then if we can agree what the questions are, I'd be happy to take the next two weeks and write answers, that then make it resubmit to the board for opening with the following meeting, with some more discussion.
Your other thought is, we can just send questions to Nate to compile?
Is that a meeting?
Sounds like he wants to take that on, so I am willing to accept that.
I just heard somebody grab a torch.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Kinda goes along with the communication as well, right?
That's a good idea, yeah. So what's the best way to do it, does it just email me between now and the next minute, or is it to?
It works.
Yeah, just as long as it's just one board member sending you a question to put into the document, that's fine, so just no, no communication between you.
Right.
Definitely.
So just send you.
Yeah. Right. Right, we've already battered up Nate, we'll look at any questions and.
Send that. Or is it gonna be like the top ten, you said, or, I mean, it could be twenty or thirty, there's a lot of questions, Charlie, so I don't know how big this is gonna be, but uh, do we wanna come?
At a minimum, maybe there's five or six, like, if you of us comes up with one.
Yeah, I think we just. Trick something up, make sure it happens, okay.
I mean, Kristen, Patty, a few of examples of things that you think that we should, you know, that you get asked that we should respond to, like.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I think the high school uh, is a frequent flyer, um.
There's also the ability to put links there in that, right, so let's try to jot, we can, we can link all the.
Right, yes, right, cuz you could say, there's actually a policy, there's a lot, I spend a lot of time following to that question, right.
And if you're waiting on the policy section, then you can stumble through all four hundred and ninety-eight billion of them, and uh, everything, all the amazing, all the business that you have, and.
Did that, isn't there?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
People from there, yeah, alright, so we all agree that it can be brilliant on that matter.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
I don't know about that, but sure.
Alright, uh, we do not, I do not see the PTO, so I'm going to skip over the PTO update. Uh, Nate, is the executive board met?
No.
Alright, so we're gonna let that one go. Uh, Ms. Withy?
Yes.
Uh, are you interested in providing us with the principal's report?
I most certainly am.
Alright, fire away.
So, this covers um, from the last meeting, December second, uh, Thursday, through today, December fifteenth. Our Critical Friends Group, I've mentioned them a couple of times, uh, is a group of staff members that to get, get together, oftentimes on either PD Wednesday or on a Tuesday afternoon after school. Um, and they met um, this uh, on December eighth, was a, one of their meetings, they, it's a brainstorming, problem-solving type um, atmosphere, there's protocols that are followed, uh, and so, just wanted to let you know that that meeting took place. Um, teachers have submitted their report cards, we're in the process of, of checking them and cleaning them up, and by we, I mean Brooke and Candy do a lot of that work, I, I go through a lot of it as well. Um, just making sure that, you know, uh, certain subjects, if there's no grit, if things are cleaned up, and, and every single report card, every trimester is like a brand-new template, so, um, sometimes the templates get a little wonky, depending on updates to Alma, and so we just wanna make sure that everything looks um, good to go, we're, our plan is to email them out to families on Friday, this is Friday the seventeenth. Um, Fri- Friday has started back up at Deerfield Community School, so, that's every Friday. Um, so the, a class is responsible for starting a fire in the morning, and um, all throughout the course of the day, that fire is manned by different um, classes, so it's never left unattended, and the last class to visit that fire pit at the end of the day is responsible for making sure that the fire is out. Um, this Friday, we're going to be having cocoa at our sites, so uh, the kids are really looking forward to that. On Friday, uh, Friday, was that the thirteen, no, fifty, uh, we had um, eight-day admin day, so we met with, uh, this, this round, we met with our preschool team and um, Mrs. Petroselli for technology and Mrs. Mostu for library, um, preschool is working on all things December holidays, they are doing transportation with their three-year-olds and gingerbread men with their four-year-olds, uh, Mrs. Mostu works with the three-year-old, four-year-old class, they come up for library, into the library, which is a lot of fun, and they did a gingerbread hunt in the library. Um, we found those little guys everywhere in this building, so. Um, the preschool team also, um, they adopt a family every year, so in lieu of staff gifts to each other, they did, they put a pool of money in and adopted a family with an eighteen-month-old and a three-year-old, and they were able to purchase um, winter gear and books and toys um, for that family, for this Christmas. Uh, Mrs. Mostu met with the public, the Deerfield Public Librarians recently, um, the public librarians are looking, there's a new children's, is she fairly new, um, but, children's librarian, um, they're looking to develop a strong relationship with D C S, so um, they're, they met with Beth to kinda think about, uh, you know, making plans for the future, and how can we collaborate together? Um, one of the thoughts that they had is maybe in May or June, towards the end of the year, take one or two grade levels to visit, the young grades to visit the public library as a little field trip, um, to get to know the, where that, the, the location is, summer programming, that type of thing, what are we gonna do with that for? Okay. Um, they also, i- if we are able to have the art show this year, uh, they will come, the, the public librarian's gonna come and s- and be part of that um, art show, so that we can get, they can get some recognition, um, they're just eager to be more involved, um. So, Beth also met with the eighth grade and is helping them with their climate change unit that they're working on with Chris Motica, uh, middle schoolers are using the library space a lot, our eighth graders have a book speed dating in January, um, as opposed, they did a book tasting a couple of weeks ago, so they're gonna change it up a little bit. Sixth graders are in the library every week, um, in our kindergarten, first graders and second graders voted on um, their favorite Ladybug picture book. So the Ladybug Picture Book Award is a New Hampshire award, designed to promote early literacy, um, and honor a recent children's picture book, and um, the, during the November, month of November is when the, the librarians all across the state of New Hampshire read these books to the kids, and then the K to two kids uh, voted for it on Google form, and the D C S winner was Snail Crossing. Um, so that was exciting. Mrs. Petros, Petroselli is working on strategies to get technology information out to staff, that's when the, during the C F G, that was the problem set that they discussed, um. Really talking about having a tech initiative, and how can we get information out to staff, and it, it does so much, so much right now um, on their plates. Um, we discussed maybe using the January twenty-fourth P D day as, as a technology day, and, and having stations built in throughout the course of the day. Um, on Monday the thirteenth, we had um, C R B, which is next on the agenda, and Gigi will report out on that. Uh, we've started our eight-day countdown for our holiday, to our holiday break, so it's been very festive at D C S, including Mrs. Withy's earrings, because you know I'm an earring model. Um, so, we've had headwear and accessories, they had to dress like an ornament yesterday, they had festive socks today, tomorrow is selfie with the elfie. Um, we have a candy cane day coming up, I'm gonna borrow Patty's red and white outfit, um, holiday sweater coming up, we did not say ugly sweater, because, you know, not everybody's sweater is ugly. Um, last evening, we had the M B C meeting, Mr. Mindlois did a wonderful job presenting our budget, and um, today we had S A leadership, it was a Google meet, um, we had a few items to discuss as a leadership team in the district. Coming up, Chris Motica will be here tomorrow, he's going to be meeting with the eighth-grade team, they're working on their interdisciplinary unit still on climate change, um, they're making a lot of really great progress. On January, Chris will be here to start the culture work with sixth and seventh grade, and then when the eighth grade is finished with their uh, climate unit, they'll join the culture work that's going on. Um, we've had a few basketball games, uh, the girls have played a few games, our boys have their first game on Tuesday, this Tuesday the twenty-first, they'll be playing at home versus Stratford. And Friday, our eighth graders will be visiting Concord High School, oh, I can't believe it, it's gonna go by fast. So that will be on this Friday, taking a field trip over there, and I wanna make sure, wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all.
I had something for you, uh, when we met with the Concord School Board, we talked about trying to get some sort of earlier, is that, is that like a next year, like?
Increase that. Um, that's a great question, I know, uh, no, you weren't at that meeting, were you at that meeting?
That wasn't there the next tour.
The tour.
That was the, that was the tour, and then the conversation followed.
The tour, I'm sorry. So, yeah, one of the, one of the topics was trying to start including Deerfield students um, and uh, helping bring them into that Concord experience maybe a little bit sooner, so their introductions, maybe you could start in sixth and seventh grade a little bit.
Oh, or grade-wise.
Grade-wise, and that's.
Like team and activity-based, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I think that's something that we should uh, it was well-received by their board, but uh, we need to, we need to continue pushing on, there's ways to help uh, and a lot of that was for families, so their first Concord necessary experiences in eighth grade, winter of eighth grade, this, this one meeting, and, and kind of familiarizing them, I think more so, maybe a couple of extra tours throughout the course, and then we, an opportunity for our families to go in and then
Hmm.
participation with some of the other programs, some of the music programs, having Deerfield students participate a little bit, or come and observe.
Oh, yeah. Maybe if they were doing like a dry run or a concert, or they were doing a dress rehearsal, play.
Something, anything, anything to help incorporate our students a little bit sooner into their.
People can run with too, though, is there a same?
We're not worried about.
They're still, every, like, if you're, you all know, I'm just.
It's no different than bus drivers, I don't care about, how much class drivers do I care about Deerfields?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking. They're all gonna be at C H S together, it was like, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but it was just, it wa, it was ways to help introduce families to Concord and that, potentially Concord experience sooner in the process of the year.
Obviously, we had mentioned things like, um, it is too late for this, obviously, this year, but for next year, as we're looking ahead to the instance of the football uh, season, you know, there probably are Deerfield tea of families who might, if there was an opening, like, at one night where Deerfield families get in free, I mean, it may be that a range of families would wanna go watch a football game in Concord.
Yeah, we actually do that at P A, we have a night, like, we have an Epsom night, and we invite families from Epsom to come to a basketball game at P A to see the school in the gym, like, right?
Something like that, where younger families would be interested in going to do that and see.
Yeah.
Well, like, not only like sports, like clubs and extracurriculars, so if like, if they have a chess club and somebody from Deerfield is really excited about doing something like that, they can meet the other people.
Plays, everything, yeah.
I'll also say that it was, both boards, at least the representatives who were there, um, felt that that's something both boards can look better on. So I think across the board, we need to try to help facilitate, and obviously, uh, we can do our part, they can do our part, but we still need to connect the dots.
I know there's a, uh, the, the first robotics program at C H S is pretty robust, and so uh, that season ends in sort of March-ish, but then all spring, I know that they like to tour and sort of bring the robot to various places, so that might be, you know, take a day and bring the robot to the gym here.
I think, oh, how many of our kids, their minds would be blown to see what, you know, what those high school students are using this for.
And we certainly have Deerfield kids on robotics.
Right, but I mean, it's definitely just to help kind of, is that, that further explore the form.
To the younger kids, showing like.
Yeah.
Excitement about that next level, it might be a new place, but that's something that you're doing today here.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, I don't know who got it first, so.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Um, one question, I have for you, Kristen, uh, with Chris Motica, I, being a parent of a seventh grade, I got uh, updated form back on the homework policy in seventh grade, and I kinda felt touching the Chris in it, and so I didn't know if it was, um,
Yeah.
you know, that intrinsic extrinsic motivation, but I saw that, you know, the way the seventh grade team's now handling missing is that something that was guided by Chris, um, as far as the way we're dealing with missing assignments and things like that, is that direction you are looking to see the middle school going, continue moving?
Yeah, I thi, I think that they, um, we're just working together to try to just work on the culture of the middle school, and so, open, uh, uh, Chris hasn't really started the culture work yet, but the seventh grade team was anxious to get that started and get that rolling, so, um, that happened while I was gone too, a lot of stuff that's happening while Mrs. Withy is gone. Um, and, and so, eighth grade had been doing some culture changes as well, with there's your old hero, and earning fours, and recognizing kids, and seventh grade sort of tagged along, um. We've been a couple of new seventh grade team members, and so I think they brought in kind of a different energy to the, to the team, and we're excited to try some things that have worked for them in the past, so. Um, yeah, I think that we're seeing some seventh grade kids starting to lose interest in getting their assignments finished, so they knew they needed to do something to catch them off before we started to lose them, so. Um, yeah, so that's, it's, it's along the lines of, um, a lot of the discussions that we've had with Chris about working towards changing that culture.
Um and then they kind of pieced it all together. So we're not waiting for Chris to start that. We're just moving, we're kind of moving it along as.
You know, I I liked it and it seemed seemed like the direction we wanted to be moving, but I was wondering how much of it was driven from above or within. Because it's it was this, I asked him that question this summer when he was here was, you know, if I didn't know my assignments, but I can get fours on all my summatives. Why should I penalize everything? And it seems to be much more in line with that, not saying that kids should be skipping assignments, but uh I was wondering if that was the direction that you were hoping to see it go as well, just because I know as a seventeen grade team evolved and changed as much as it did, if that was a positive in your mind.
Yeah, I think um they're they they they're making it work for themselves. Um and each team really does things a little bit differently, but um that so that's what we're trying to do is bring those. They're all kind of doing the same thing, but in it in a different sort of way. So I'm trying to get some cohesion with the team um and building building the culture that way. Um giving them the the rights to be able to do what works for them, what works best for them.
But it sounds like that was more an organic occurrence than it was uh a top down maybe.
Uh it was not top down.
Right, so that was organic, so that was recognized within the team and that was a more organic approach to improving things.
Yeah.
Possible. Okay. Any other questions for Chris Boyd?
Uh that actually that actually bled into my question. So I think it was answered. I was just uh you mentioned Chris Motica and culture work.
Yes, you have something.
And I was curious about what that looked like and. Um so we'll start that in January. I haven't, Chris is working on that plan still a little bit, taking it before um he was, he'll be here tomorrow.
Yeah.
And so the hope is that we're gonna talk about that, share he'll share what he has and um and I'll certainly share it with the board once once we get rolling on that.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh that brings us to the C R B.
Uh C R B the meet and um just as a reminder, uh we um have approved the social studies curriculum. We have uh library, science, music, technology and wellness with media reviews. And math and guidance are up for revisions. And uh so uh having said that, no, uh there's been movement on the math uh revision progress. They just kind of reported out on that. Um they're uh just kind of looking time to meet with teams to organize the themselves. Um and uh that most of their uh conversation about that was just, you know, how how we or, you know, organize to meet with each team. Uh so uh Jamie was meeting with the second and third grade team. Jen was meeting with the fourth and fifth grade team. Uh um before a break and uh and the math team didn't meet with Chris. And um and so the other pieces that they were talking a little bit about readers, we'll need readers for the curriculum. Talk about the benefits of being a reader for a curriculum. It was nice to hear the teachers talking about um being uh um for some of the teachers like who don't teach math. And then, of course, all the elementary teachers who uh do teach math. And it was uh good to hear them talk about how it was so interesting to review the curriculum. To just kind of get really immersed in the thinking of what they were teaching and how it's built and how it helps them teach better. Because they they're more thoroughly immersed in like, oh, I ca- I see where this open sequence is actually going. Um E L A, uh they checked in. Uh they're doing competency rumor provisions, um getting those out to fourth through eighth grade. Um and they're gonna do a quick run through of each grade level at the next meeting. And um just discussed about making the uh E L A documents a little bit easier to access. Um and where they're stored. Uh library, uh they did a check in. Um and they were uh kind of completing their mid-cycle review this fall. Uh also connected with technology, um the the library and tech are working really closely together because it just makes sense that they work closely together. Um uh the science, uh not not a whole lot going on, uh except they did make decisions that um uh Kira and Hillary are gonna uh chair the committee. That they'll have um no major updates in uh music. But that uh both teachers in music were talking about incorporating more multicultural music education into uh the curriculum. And uh and then technology, um uh Brooke talked about uh getting new wording for digital citizenship. And um having some kind of user friendly kind of reminders that are positive as opposed to don't do this and don't do that. Um uh and and that the um that being a digital citizen now really also entails more than just knowing how to move your mouse and and work with your computer. But it's about um I'm, you know, the so some of the key phrases in there were I'm inclusive, I'm informed, I'm engaged, I'm balanced, I'm alert. Um uh wellness was kind of uh status quo for right now. And uh Kristen, it on the social studies piece, I'm I was having a little bit of tech difficulty in the beginning. So I didn't, that was the very first thing at the beginning of the meeting. And I see that they were doing uh some curriculum mapping um and kind of talking about which competencies met. They met during each trimester and creating essential questions, but I can't say a lot about that.
They worked on that the last P D day. Um I think would be the only addition to every day. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, how how'd that go? How'd I do?
How?
I'm done. So did I do okay?
Yeah, that's from those very little time.
Okay, good. All right. Do you already have a question or anything?
Questions for P D, yeah.
Um the social studies curriculum was just approved last in the May, right?
Yeah.
So then this work is just sort of coordinating who's doing what, basically, of the curriculum is that what you're in, that's the next step.
Basically, yeah. Yeah, just keeping them fresh, working on um the making sure that all the competencies are covered. Just just mapping it out and making sure that every grade level is is good to go. Um working on some of their units that they have. Um yeah, it's just continual work. It's it's some of it's new, some of the curriculum is new, as you know. Uh so they're just just trying to make sure that they got all the bases covered.
And could you remind me that who in the middle school, who it, do we have someone certi- anyone certified in social studies?
Yeah, so um yeah, we have uh in eighth grade, um Anna Clark is also certified social studies.
Okay.
And in sixth grade, um Stephanie Flanagan is also social studies certified. And uh in seventh grade, Joanne Franklin um has taken on a huge role helping the group um with the social studies piece. Uh and they usually seventh grade will take every afternoon method that we have, they plan as a team. They work together, figure out what's gonna what they're gonna do for the next week. Um sixth grade, their social studies time, uh the teachers work together. They're all teaching the same thing. Um and eighth grade has kept it, so uh seventh and sixth and seventh grade do that. So if the unit is on, they're doing immigration, all of them are doing immigration. Um and then eighth grade, Mr. Dudley teaches one subject. Um Mrs. Clark teaches another. And um Brooke um uh Les Gatsby is teaching the third. And then after after a certain number of weeks, they rotate in the groups. So that's how they want to keep it. So that's how they're.
Okay. And ju- uh thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And just in general, that's like just my biggest probably anxiousness of like just making sure that because it's such an important, you know, piece of between, um you know, so much, especially in eighth grade about like how our government works and things like that get taught that it seems such such an important
Yeah.
piece. So just wanna make sure it's rolling along.
Yeah, um I I know that the eighth grade, I mean, they just they love their subjects that they teach and they got really passionate about it. And they've really developed their units and and um so they they just wanted to keep it that way. Uh that was the initial intent, that that's how it would roll. And then sixth grade and seventh grade wanted to do it as well. So that's the fine balance of having a K to E building is that you let each team do what works best for them. Um with it with staying in some sort of confines of, you know, what's best for kids too. So um but that's that's how that and and yes, that so there are a couple of certified social studies teachers in each in our middle school.
Okay.
And Mr. Greve also is social studies certified.
Do easier than a sign. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One more. Um you mentioned a new science current science committee, but I think science is at the mid-cycle point. Is the committee just to sort of map out the next three years until the re- where's the committee going?
She mentioned there are two new um chairman of the committee. So for a long time, we had a uh Sam Wilson was chairing the committee. Um and Kira and Hillary, the sixth grade teacher and the seventh grade science teacher, have they are gonna chair the committee and take the office task plate.
I see. Okay. But it is at the midpoint and so they are coming up again in three or four years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Uh Mr. Kelly, building expansion.
So we are racing against the clock, um but everything is moving in the right direction. Uh we met with La Valley Brenn Singer today, uh reviewed further distilled plans um that are actually getting down to the plan level instead of just kind of hypotheticals. Um so that the construction manager can price those out. They're going to have pricing to us the first week of January. We're meeting, uh we're gonna do a public presentation on January fifth with La Valley Brenn Singer, um presenting to the town.
So start of our meeting on the sixth. At the start of the board meeting on the sixth.
Correct, yes. Um at the start of board meeting on the sixth, um showing
On the fifth.
The fifth at six. Um showing, you know, the problems that we faced and how the solution cures those problems. Um at that point, we'll have a ballpark, a range of numbers for them, but there is still going to be review. There's going to be review that needs to be done to the pricing before we can present an X amount of dollars number. Uh that will be ready. Um
Nineteen.
Around between January eleventh and the nineteenth, we're gonna be looking for the N B C to let us present hopefully a little later than they were hoping. Um but that's gonna give us time to accurately and and uh present that number. Um Uh other than that, anything else?
Any questions for Jeffrey? All right. Thank you for all your work and for the reading and for all the work on that. See you later, bud. Um Nate, high school options.
Uh coordinating multiple board schedules is proving harder than uh
With some committees and budget meetings.
Uh especially during the budget season, right? So um so we are, we're likely, we are not able to meet again until after the holidays. But uh we're looking at picking it up in January and next meeting, I think, if we'll continue with Concord, but uh nothing out there right now.
All right. And then as far as the N B C goes, uh we had two meetings with the N B C since our last board meeting. And so a week ago yesterday, we had an N B C meeting in which the architects from La Valley came in and met with the N B C and showed them the conceptuals and uh kind of explained to the N B C what a lot of the issues with existing structure are and all the looking remedy. Uh so it was actually uh Jeff was there. I thought it was a pretty good meeting and a good opportunity for those folks to get an idea of what we're trying to accomplish. Uh we also met last night uh with our administrative team and school administration. And presented the N B C with our uh current budget or proposed budget. Uh did a pretty extensive walkthrough of the budget and will continue that conversation with the N B C next week on Tuesday. Uh hopefully uh cleaning everything up and bringing on another group. Go ahead.
Uh more about actually the building sort of plans, I guess, but tied to the N B C. Um I uh the the question is, is how do we, we're gonna get down to the wire. We're gonna get the number at sort of the last possible minute. Um and I guess my question is the sort of the secrets of events between that point and the vote in March. It's gonna go on, it's gonna go into the deliberative session? Can it be changed in any way in the deliberative session? Uh and I don't know if we have these answers yet. I think we should be, but.
I'm certain no.
No, it can't be changed in the deliberative session.
I don't think if you're going, if you're going for a bond, it's a set amount for the project.
Okay, okay. So then essentially from that moment, mid-January, it sounds like we get the definite number. We have really nothing happens to the deliberative, but the vote of March twelfth or whatever the town vote is is when we see if it passes. So so how do we, how do we put ourselves or put the, you know, not ourselves necessarily,
If it passes, right.
but how do we inform the town as best as we can to?
We as a committee will be doing education.
Yeah.
Um the committee itself can only present the facts as they are. Um there's another, there's a group of people in town working that support the project and will be encouraging people to um vote yes for it. Um we as a committee can say, here are the problems with the school. Here is why we don't meet D O E standards. Um in all of those facts, um we'll be doing things like um phone boards down in the lobby. So for every parent that comes in, they can in um parks and rec. Uh we'll have a website up that the S A U is gonna help us with. Um that other group in town is working uh on a website, basically telling the story. So that that effort is gonna go live right around that January nineteenth date. Um so it'll be, you know, uh social media outreach and all kinds of things like that. Um other public forums. Um so we'll have another public forum on the nineteenth at our meeting. Uh once the number is then out there where people can come and ask questions and say, why does this cost what it costs? And, you know, kind of give them a chance. So uh there'll be a bunch of community outreach between January nineteenth and the vote.
Okay, sounds great. Uh is, does that mean that then as a board member, I should not be getting any more involved than just a typical meeting?
I would love it if you wanted to get more involved.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking for, I guess. Over the next maybe a couple of meetings, if I give more information about how I can be helpful. Please let me know.
You will regret that. That's funny. Okay.
But I think uh I know from my own standpoint, I have been talking to anybody who would like to listen to this project and what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
So um there's gonna be a lot of conversations over the next, say, ninety days prior to the vote.
But hopefully um we can use our message out across and build an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
And I was just gonna say, um like La Valley Brenn Singer also is like offering up to me really helpful and helping to create the um not not like a campaign to like vote this way or that way, but really to kind of lay out like a compelling story about the need. This, you know, these are the, these are the existing conditions, you know, these these are costs associated currently with those existing conditions. So on and so forth. Like so those things are in the works already.
Okay, okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh that brings us to more articles from twenty twenty three. So you should all have a copy. Did you get these out to everybody yet?
Yes.
So everybody should have a copy of the draft articles, at least uh in their very draft form right now. Uh so Abby, you wanna walk us?
I can start. Um so it was an interesting set of notes that I gave Kathy to try to to try to type these up after what we wanted. Um I think she did a good job. We shipped them off to um two different places. We sent them to attorney Eggers for his review because he's the one that gives us the final go ahead on our warrant articles. And then we also sent um the first article to the bond council. So they also reviewed and made some edits. Um Dean let us know that the bond has to be the first article. So even for the budget, that has to be the first article. So that's why that's there.
Do you wanna answer that question?
Yeah, I didn't know that. I had the budget first.
Nope, that's fine. I answered the question.
Uh can you fix that? Um I did put his email in the drive to you as well because I thought it might be helpful for you to to see his comments on the warrant articles. I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to capture everything, um that he was trying to, all the wisdom that he was. Um that he was trying to, all the wisdom that he was imparting on us. Um and it's basically the email I think is um it's, you'll turn out his response in your um in your warrant article because it's um set up the way that he wanted to, but a little, but a little bit of a twist. Um so the first one is the bond article, obviously we have to fill in um some more specifics. Then you'll have your operating budget, um that's something that you can vote on tonight or you can take it up as a slate um when you're ready. Um and then the third article is um referencing back to the bond article that if that passes um would would the voters also want to add a community, a community recreation center to the school? And obviously that price is also pending. Um and then we're talking about if article, so it's, there's a lot referencing back to other articles. Um so if the bond article fails, um would you want to raise an appropriate two hundred fifty thousand dollars um from surplus for the purpose of school um building repair? Sh- four A would be, shall the Deerfield School District, if Article Four fails, vote to raise an appropriate two hundred fifty thousand dollars for building repair? So there's raise and appropriate and then there's from the unassigned fund out, so you talked about decide, making that decision when um
So that's really, we really should we pick one article?
Afterwards. Yes, correct. There's four and four A, so it's kind of an either or. Um I'll just go through them and then I'll even go back, if that's okay? And then uh number five, if Article One passes, um so the answer is you cannot use a trust fund. I'm answering the question, the board's asked, um you can't use a trust fund um to offset taxes. So you've established a trust fund for a certain purpose, it can only be used for that purpose. So you actually have to dissolve the fund. So you could dissolve the fund and then create a fund with a little bit more or less money, so you are a, you're um accomplishing what you want to, but you can't do it in the way that you thought you might be able to do.
It'll look fun, it's built. That could be definitely.
Yep, yep, so when you close it, it goes back to the taxpayers, which is what your intention is.
Right.
Um and then if you wanted to, since you had mentioned, well, we'll get rid of all but a little bit. So you then would have to create the trust again with the amount of money um in it that you were hoping to keep if you were able to do what you first thought you could do. So that's a circular comment, shall?
So ba- so the language on five would basically just say that
It would, yep, close it.
Say that it would dissolve.
Send the money back, yep, which is what you were hoping to be able to do.
Okay.
Uh and then contingent on the art, passage of Article Five, so if yes, we vote to discontinue that facilities repair fund, now we're gonna turn around and establish a facilities repair fund again, which is what I just explained, and put one hundred thousand dollars in that. So if you wanted to keep a hundred thousand dollars in it and turn the rest back, this is how it has to be done. You have to close it, it all goes back, and then the voters have to say, okay, now you can create it again and fund it with a hundred thousand dollars. Um number seven, shall the Deerfield School District, if Article One passes, vote to discontinue the school facility paving expendable trust fund? So this is where you said, we're not gonna need this, need this anymore, so we're gonna turn that money back. If you thought you might want a paving trust fund, you would mirror what we did in the previous article. It, you can do, it's, it's sort of pointless right now, because if down the road you decide you think you might wanna fa- uh want this, then you create it when you think you need it, instead of just keeping it open with like, you know, a small amount of money as a just in case. And then number eight, contingent on the passage of Article Seven, uh which is that paving trust fund again, um put a dollar into it, which is what we just talked about, decide to do that or just let it go and create it when you need it. Um and then number nine is new, um and I, I had forgotten to check back in with Amber because I asked her for the statute. Um so the statute changed a little bit and I do need to get a copy and I wanna share it with you, I haven't looked at it since it passed. Um but it did authorize, and this is be, and indefinitely until you rescind, rescind it, the retention of year-end unassigned funds and the amount not to exceed five percent. So it's up from two and a half percent and it's now five percent. Um and my understanding is, I think it has more flexibility than the two and a half percent retention that you have now. But like I said, I forgot to pull that statute again, so I do wanna look at that. Um so you'll need to, once I get the statute to you, you'll need to decide if you wanna increase that and um into the five percent. So right now you have two and a half percent. Right now the formula is two, two and a half percent of your assessed evaluation, you can retain up to that amount. And you've historically done around this two hundred thousand dollar. Um so when that statute passed, you have a warrant article very similar to this in order to allow you to do that, and it stays until it's rescinded. So each year, as if you recall, when it's time to do tax rate setting, you vote, because that money gets back every year and you have to, you vote on, okay, do we wanna set aside two hundred thousand again, do we wanna set aside more, do we wanna set aside less?
So it's a way of opening the threshold.
So this just raises your opportunity to set aside five percent. I need to follow up the statute, because I think there's more um flexibility than there was with two and a half percent. So I'll get that to you and then you can decide if you wanted to accept that new percentage.
Alright. So um obviously Article One, the language is driven by laws, so there's not a whole lot we can do without uh certain numbers from the town comes.
Okay.
So, would you agree with that?
Would you?
Article Two, oh Dave, I'm sorry.
Uh it's not that important, I was curious why I asked him first.
It's hilarious, I saw.
That's all I have to be right now, because he said so.
It's hilarious, I saw. Alright, that works. Um Article Two, uh in this particular instance, we've already passed those numbers, so we could make our recommendations for Article Two, if the M B C makes any amendments, obviously we may go ahead and revisit it. But uh it would be appropriate at this time for us to try to dispose of something. Okay, so uh that being said, we're not gonna be changing the dollar amounts, we've already given the budget to the M B C, so
And you voted on it, yep.
So I look for a motion to approve Article Two as presented. Seconded by G D, seconded by Jeff, any discussion?
Is that Jeff or me?
Yeah.
Jeff, any discussion? Hold on, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So are we all, are we gonna, uh as part of this, are we changing the school board recommends?
Yeah, we'll just all start calculating those. Um hopefully unanimously. Uh so, all in favor? Alright, alright, agreed unanimously, alright.
Bye.
So I'll be filling those in and it will say school board, school board recommends approval five to zero. And then when we give this to the budget committee, any that you vote on, we'll have your votes in there.
And then we'll add their votes to it, if they make changes for our budget, we'll come back and revisit any articles or or changes that could. Um alright, so if we're looking at Article Three, again, that's gonna be pretty self-explanatory, I think, in the jewelry of numbers, no, somebody explain that to me. Alright, so um Article One being on on the building, right? There is potential to add a community center, so that's where they surprised. Um on that side of the building at the same time. And cost for that would be significantly reduced, because engineering, construction, civil side are all gonna be outside anyway. So the thought process was two bonds, two uh warrants for a bond. They effectively, educational space that we need, at the same time, do you wanna build a additional community center? And then um if the first article passes, it would allow the second article to pass. If the first article doesn't pass, the second. Jeff?
Um while I fully support it, it has encouraged me that we've probably jumped the gun in that we haven't talked to Parks and Rec and gotten their blessing that they even wanted to vote here. So say we did put this on and it passed, and Parks and Rec is like, you've got a three-year lease.
So Yeah, I, I think the um, I know the town administrator is very interested and I certainly um I think Parks and Rec will be, and I've already started that ball rolling down the hill as far as kind of bringing them up to speed. Uh we showed that to the M B C, so we've clearly made major public, this is a ver- a a possibility. I think for the moment, we leave the article in the place, and if we decide next it is the last minute, we can scrap it at the last minute.
We can scrap it at the last minute.
Mm-hmm, as long, yeah.
So we
Not at the last minute.
Yeah, so
Right, it doesn't, we can scrap it in a couple of weeks and decide what we don't want.
Yeah, so I think, like we talked about earlier tonight, like let's give them ASAP, Parks and Rec ASAP, just to make sure
Yep. Get that money.
We don't fill the twelve thousand square foot empty building.
So a little, Nate, you might want a little bit more information than that, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Um so the um, you're, originally there were the three sets of plans.
Yeah.
Um and one of the, the biggest addition was um sort of a a wing off both sides.
Right, for your grow.
Yeah, so what's settled on right now is sort of this one side.
Right.
Um the thought was, we could ask the question, you know, do you want this other chunk? And that that would function as um a place for the community that we've talked about before. If you had a way, you know, right now, everybody going to the gym comes through the lobby and it, you know, into the building. This potentially could have, you know, sort of a square structure with a door um that can be locked in and out of the school, with a door that can come in from the outside, that you would just have access to that space, and then another door on the backside. Um just right now, just very rough, the thought, you know, they presented us with, you might want locker rooms in there, you might want an office for Parks and Rec to have access to in there. Um it would be a space that, you know, there's so much that goes on in our gym right now that it would, you know, you wouldn't have to have someone come here on Saturday morning to open the building, like this is a space that they could have access to. They could have space for their after-school program that they consistently don't have and want more space from, you know, to use from us. And any other things that the community might, you know, wanna use that space that they would have full access to.
So this would involve that idea that was floated, I think, for the biggest plan of moving the gym.
Nope.
No, still the gym.
We still have our gym, yeah, it would be a separate space.
Yeah, so
The school retains The school retains its gym.
The gym is here.
Community.
A community center.
Not a new gym, not a second gym.
A new gym.
A community center.
Yes.
A second gym.
Open space.
A community center.
A community center, okay.
Which can be used for all sorts of things.
Okay.
Twelve thousand square feet, two locker rooms, two offices.
Wow.
And it's completely separate from the school, it's got, you know, it's a six-story door connecting the two, but
Independent staircase. Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, school would also have use of it, obviously, around the school. So I mean, it's, it it could be beneficial in a lot of regards, but a community center for this town would be a huge, I agree.
And that way, it's not just part of our addition for this huge amount of money, it's, okay, we can section this off, and if this is something that's important to the community, we're gonna kind of leave it up to you to make that decision. Do they capture that correctly?
Thank you. Yep. So we can leave Article Three alone. So Article Four and Four A was that discussion, uh and you guys, do we need to add additional funds into the?
Yes.
Sorry, one last question just came to mind. If, 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 if the bond passes, we're not really breaking ground for a year, I mean, is that a fair statement?
It's not.
Two or three years.
Well, it's a year of design and then
Right. And if this is a separate thing, could this, if this fails, if one passes but three fails, could we come back to three next year and try it again?
Yep.
I think so.
And still get sort of a reduced rate kind of a good, you might think.
Yes.
That's a good point.
Level cushion.
As long as you're, while they're here and
Still the ball, okay.
I mean, there's gonna be engineering that should be stronger. Passes, it would be heavier engineering, it's gonna be triggered with the passage, it would be a bit more forceful. So delaying it a year would inherently increase somewhere the cost, because we're not doing pretty engineering, maybe don't have it, but it's not necessary. Uh alright, so Four and Four A, I think
I'm, I did just, something occurred to me, I apologize, that I interrupted you, I was
No.
Never apologize. We're friends.
Okay, well, um no, I was just thinking, um that, so there is a possibility, the way this is written, that we could vote for a community center and not for
Only, no, only if Article One passes.
No, it only matters if Article One passes.
So the beginning of Three says
Article One hasn't passed.
If Article One passes.
If Article One passes, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I I, and I thought that, I I was thinking, I was just like, I have to
From a vote, by any standpoint, you could be able to have Article Three pass, but Article One didn't.
Those matter.
Doesn't matter.
Gotcha, yep.
Okay. Alright, Four and Four A, so really we kind of need to narrow it down, in a nutshell, do we wanna take the funds from surplus? Article One fails, or do we wanna raise an appropriate additional two hundred fifty thousand?
Nate? Uh in Four A, do you mean if Article One fails?
Yes.
Yeah.
If Article One fails, correct. So you don't get the bond, you don't get the the renovation, you are, you want money for um to continue.
So ultimately, the first question is, is do we wanna, do we wanna seek two hundred fifty thousand to add to that fund in the event of the Article One fails?
Yeah.
I mean, and then where do we wanna find that money? From surplus, be available, or do we wanna raise?
I think we have a better chance of it passing, if we take it from surplus, when people see it's not gonna raise taxation, we're gonna need that money if it doesn't pass, so I think we can deal with our best chance of it passing.
Okay, so
No, and in that scenario, it decreases what we would give back to the community.
Yes.
It's money that's already been raised.
But it's the, but it's the better of two.
So then we wanna strike Four.
Okay. Uh so you don't think it's on the current this whole year?
No, not yet.
I mean, that was kinda mine.
We're, we're barely getting budget stuff for, for budget committees, um and and when Amber has that all done, she'll be able to start looking at where we're at with this.
Would it be in the next two weeks before we have to decide? No, not like that.
I hope so.
Don't hold it forever.
I hope so.
Alright. Then I would, I would lean towards the from surplus, but if we're not gonna have a surplus, because we're in default this year, then then we're shooting ourselves in the foot by taking that choice.
That's the gamble.
Yeah, that's the gamble.
I mean, I think the silver lining there is potentially the grants and COVID money have potentially put us in a position to have a surplus, or is that still an unknown?
I think it's, it's still unknown until we see where we're at in the budget. You can't, you can't um supplant your budget, so you have to come up with things that
Grants.
you don't already plan to purchase, right? So it's, you can't just say like, oh, we need more money, we're gonna take that grant and offset what you already planned for, so it depends on where your surplus is, whether or not that grant's gonna help your budget.
Alright, so Nate?
If we had more information by February twelve, in the deliberative session, could we change the language from surplus to taxation? Or at that point, it's locked in?
I guess the difference will be the definition of intent. You, you could argue the intent was to take it from surplus, I don't know where that, where that would fall, I have to ask Dean at the time.
Could you, could that line, yeah, could that language just be inserted?
Well, you can't change the intent, but if, if the intent is to put money into the trust,
As well, the question is, is the intent?
then maybe it's okay to change the funding source, I would want a legal opinion on that.
I would too.
Alright.
But that's a good idea, yeah, Nate.
Thank you.
So for the time being, we'd wanna tentatively strike Four A. We're not completely, obviously, we look forward
We're keep going and strike for it, yes.
Are we all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Correct.
So we would like to strike Four A.
Alright.
Okay.
So do you wanna vote on that and then change your vote later if you choose?
So moved.
We could certainly do that. You guys wanna vote on Article Four?
Yeah.
Sure.
Alright, so I look for a motion to approve Article Four.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andy, seconded by G D, any additional discussion? All in favor?
I.
Nice.
Alright, alright. So Four A is gone. Um a question just to my own mind on Article Five is, is there a reason to not move Article Five between Three and Four? So that the option to give money back comes before the option to add money to that account?
Well, it's number three and four, isn't it?
Independent of Three, so but instead of having, so should Five appear ahead of Number Four?
Well, you talk, one talks about if it fails and one talks about if it passes.
Right.
So if it fails, you're gonna want the money, if it passes, you're gonna give it back.
But if it passes, you're gonna wanna get the money back, so you wanna, you wanna ask the voters, would you like the money back first? Or do you, you wanna ask the voters who want money first?
I see the optics of that, but um by that point, they're probably are gonna have
Yeah.
Maybe.
Already probably will have made a decision on Number One. Uh and furthermore, the more I think about the funding and not knowing when we're gonna have the money available for the bond, if it does pass, I'm, I would fully support giving the money back, but I would support them not putting it on the um a warrant article this year. Because if Article One passes, then this comes back to the fire alarm upgrade we need to make. But if we drain that fund, we're gonna be sitting upstairs going, oh god, we got a hundred thousand dollars from that. Actually, we could end up with zero money in there, right? Because if Five passes
Yeah, right, you could end up with just what you have now.
Or, or if Five passes and Six doesn't, then we've got And Six doesn't. Zero.
Zero in where we
Right, you got what's in there, you've got what you've currently got in there and that's it.
Not even a point.
That's it, right, but
No, we could end up with nothing.
Just give it No, Five only goes into effect if Article One passes.
Sure, but we still could have zero in there for a period of time.
Well, no, that, that, that fund's already got, besides Well, no, that, that, that fund's already got sizable sum of money.
Nothing happens until July first.
Okay, my misunderstanding.
Yeah, so you could put that in there. And if the, if the bond passes and we are told to have to have to have to have that new system installed, we could install that.
You spend it all before it closes?
That's not what I'm saying.
Wait a minute, I think it is.
That's not what I'm saying.
That's exactly what he said. Of course, so. Can you, can we confirm that if that Article one passes, we'll have the money available from that bond to draw until July one? That seems like a very quick closing period.
We know, we'd have to still negotiate the bond and get everything in line, there's a timeframe there, right?
Yeah.
So that would.
Well, I don't know, maybe they do, no, you have to have approved it first.
All I know is I think we're putting ourselves in a risky position and we need to spend two hundred something thousand dollars this summer.
So. Can we re, can we revisit this post-conversation with the chief?
Yes, but that work has, has to happen over the summer.
Uh, the chief, my understanding from the chief was if, if, if the bond passes and he knows it's occurring, he knows it's part of that process.
I, I find hitting pause on it.
Yeah.
If, if he's okay with that, but we also really should figure out when we can start drawing against that Article one fund.
And maybe get that right.
Yes.
But I will, I will, I've tried calling, I'll try calling.
Do we need to lock down these articles at our next, what's the last meeting that we have to have these locked down?
Really, it's the next meeting that we come with them, right?
Yeah, should, yes.
Yeah. So we, we need to trim this up and clean this up as best as we can.
They've gotta do the, their, the budget day has to have their public hearing.
And we really should try to, so we have to get in touch with the chief before this meeting. I'm gonna find him.
Yes. And.
I know where he works.
But we need that, but we also need to know when the. When, depending on his answer, we need to know when those funds are available, we really should know when those funds are available.
So. Can you work on the, when the funds coming to the, the bond is already on the notes, I'll find out from the chief, we'll clean that up at the next meeting.
Notice there.
My gut says we should just strike five through eight, but.
Five through eight in their entirety? I, I certainly think that we need to look at shifting funds back, so the paving fund, I think. Six and eight, I have notes on here to strike anyway, to clean that. Right, so.
It's really confusing.
Right, so, so my mind, my mindset at the moment is, strike six, strike eight. Basically, at that point, what we're saying is if Article one passes and we have the bond for the new construction. We do not need a paving trust fund, paving is part of the new construction. So in ten years, when the asphalt is starting to consume its, its expected life and you're ten years away from needing to restart resurfacing, then you develop a new plan that. So my mentality is you strike eight and frankly, for the time being, you strike six, because if we do what we wanna do to this building, we should not need significant repairs. We wait a couple of years and then we put the insurance policy back in place. That's my mentality, so I would say, I think we should strike six and eight, if everybody's in agreement, we should do that.
I, I think I wanna wait until we hear, I mean, if we're. So strike six and eight, yeah.
Yeah, I wanna clean it up as much as.
That's fine, I wouldn't, wouldn't wanna strike five yet, though.
I didn't say five.
Six and eight.
Six and eight, right.
Yep.
Well, there are.
Yes, need a motion for consensus, cool.
So, so, so you feel six and eight?
Yeah.
Already done, okay. Alright, so that cleans them up, nine, you have to find out four is on, so really, that just leaves a question of. Five. And then on seven, are we all in agreement that if we are bonding out, we're gonna make a mess of the site, we can dispose of that paving trust fund? So do we wanna act on seven and make a recommendation on it?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Andy, seconded by Nate, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
No flavor.
No flavor?
No flavor.
Alright, Andy's not okay. Okay.
I'm waiting on the number five.
And we, are you clarifying on five, oh, I have one on the note, I'm sorry. On five and on, uh, seven, can we put a note just explaining that in the event that we do dissolve those funds? Where the balance is gonna go, so you know fund balance is returned to taxpayer as well, offset taxes. Can we put that note there and can we run that language? I know it's always been on.
We just moved it.
Zach's just saying to clarify, could we actually put a note in there that says if you vote for this, that the money will go back to offset taxes?
Yeah. So not part of the article, but just a thread, a paragraph.
Yeah, that little, it goes underneath the whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, and oftentimes, they, they do that.
Yeah, so if we can just find out, if we just clarify, you know, we're not just gonna like throw the money away, it's gonna. Go back to the select board and then use it to offset the tax rate. Okay, are we done with warrants for the moment?
No, number nine.
Number nine, I think number nine, we can't do anything with, we can only add it as a clarification.
Andy, you can have a conversation theoretically, if you wanna increase the ability to subside five percent, then I can get you the details on.
Yeah.
I'm feeling like that is gonna be interpreted as us asking for even more money. And I, I feel like I, this is not the year to do it, I mean, if it's in the, if it's in the rule books, okay, we can wait till next year.
To a certain extent, Nate, Nate's argument bears. Wait. I would, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with him in that regard, although I haven't put it in that perspective yet.
Well, it's a great, it's a great thought, because even if you say, well, we're not going to, it gives us the opportunity to, there's still that question of, okay, you've just, you've just voted that you could take another turn at.
Take more money. So, I would be, I would be comfortable based on Nate's. Strong recommendation to strike nine and revisit next year.
And also, I can still take a copy of the statute so that you understand.
So how do we feel about striking nine?
Second.
I don't know if that needed it, but.
Gone.
Gone.
It's gone.
You always say it's.
Motion second.
Is that right, so we're giving them to you, right?
It's north.
Yeah.
North, northern motions and seconds, alright. That takes care of our, uh, warrant articles. Uh, we only have one policy ruling to discuss, incorrect, that would be GPD.
So I think we fixed the issue of edits not showing up last time. In the live. Posted it. And, just one second. So what I did, I added at, um, at the end of the first paragraph, staff should refer to the Deerfield School Board Policy KEB. Regarding personnel complaints that may be brought directly to the board.
I believe that was tied more to the concern that.
Right.
Head members could be led to believe they learn a lot from spring.
There was never a time that they could go directly to you. So I brought to their attention the policy that there is, there could indeed be a circumstance that they would be allowed to do that.
Kind of in alignment with like that whole FAQ thing. Link to the thing. Well, yeah.
Alright. So, any other changes, questions, comments? And do we wanna move this or do we want to have a card in the meeting? Still.
All move articles, uh, move policy TPD, second.
Yeah, a motion by Nate, seconded by Jeff Kelly. Any additional conversation? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Alright. Uh, turns us to the matrix. There's another one coming out of curriculum, did you see that, the fourth matrix movie is coming out?
Oh, so what are you talking about?
And it looks epic.
Talk about anymore, the.
It looks epic.
About how the matrix might be. Okay, um, obviously, if you're paying any attention, there's been no change in the level of community transmission at county level or, um, Deerfield level. So that's still all points for universal masking. Second page, current information, Rockingham County's substantial, um, Deerfield active cases is twenty-seven currently. As of today, at the school, there are fourteen cases, um, and I think your fully vaccinated went up like point two percent. So you're fifty-three point three percent, uh, fully vaccinated. Um, and then the last page is the CDC chart that determines, um, the level of, um. Transmission and that PCR test positivity as a seven-day average is thirteen point nine right now and over ten is considered substantial. The number of new infections per one hundred thousand over prior fourteen days is one thousand five hundred five and over one hundred is considered substantial. That's gropey.
There's no good news there.
No, sorry.
Alright. Questions regarding the, uh, data?
No, but, oh, go, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
For next week's meeting, can we? I saw, read the guidance that you posted to the drive from June or July.
Yep.
But can we get clear guidance on what the CDC and DHHS is saying as far as asking in schools and with our situation that would apply to our situation?
Um, they have made it clear, and I don't, I don't think they're gonna issue updated guidance, that's not what we're hearing. Um, but they have made it very clear and on the phone call that Kristen and I were on, that their opinions are not changing about universal masking.
So they want universal masking? Can we get that in some form of writing? Or presentation?
Just the website, they can turn off the website? Is it that where it is?
Yeah, let's, let me, we can check in with Bonnie and see if she's seen it anywhere, and when Dr. Chan does the phone calls, he does sometimes do slides. Um, so there may very well be something that has been updated, so we'll check. Do you mind asking Nurse Bonnie?
Nope.
She has a slide or a handout or something.
Anything else you had, uh?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Kristen how the students are doing, you know, wearing their masks, have there been any issues with kids taking them off, not wearing them, anything like that?
Not, not wearing them, we have, uh, frequent reminders, our middle schoolers struggle the most, I would say. Um, and by middle school, it's any more like seventh and eighth graders, they're reminded frequently, so. And there's just a few that are consistently not doing, wearing it the right way. Oftentimes. Kids are reminded and they just fix it and we're done. But nobody refusing to wear mask. A lot of kids are running around outside with them, tell me that they keep their faces warm, so like to keep them on.
Can they go out for, after a classroom, do they, do they still wear them in the classroom, I guess if it's cold, maybe they won't.
If, if they're physically distanced, no, and if a lot of them just keep them on, they're, I, it's, they just do these.
Just go.
Yeah. Even our preschoolers. Like they, they just, the other day I was watching, they were running outside and, uh, teacher has a baggie for each kid, they take their mask off and stick it in the baggie and. And when they're done, they put it back on and the school again.
Alright, Nate, I had a, uh, information.
Um, uh, line with your name attached to it.
Yeah, thanks. Um, this is not, this, just information out of conversation, but I'm looking ahead maybe and, and hoping that we could maybe revisit it at some point, but, um. It's the, the Michigan shooting sort of jumped out at me a couple of weeks ago and, um. And the idea that there are all these, obviously hindsight's twenty-twenty and there's all these sort of red flags after the fact, but when they're happening, you don't recognize them. And that seems to be the message coming out of, I hear often after these school shootings, so it's depressing to hear that we're getting to this sort of normal and then it's returning after the COVID. But my question is, as a school, how do we, obviously can't get into certain personnel, you know, personal things, but files and all that, but how do, when kids. Do kids, when kids make shooting threats, when they say things like, I'm gonna come over to your house and shoot you? How do we deal with that? Cause it doesn't fit under bullying exactly, like there's this, seems to be this sort of area where I'd be curious to hear more about.
We, we don't mess around at all and we don't, we don't take it into our own hands, we call the police immediately. And we let them decide if it's a credible threat, um.
So any, anytime a child says to another child that, I'm gonna come over to your house and shoot you.
Well, if we hear, yeah, if it gets to us.
That goes to the police?
Yeah, if there's, if there is a shooting threat of any kind, we call the police. Because like you, every time we read something that says, oh, comments were made or kids were joking and nobody did anything and we're not taking that chance. So. You know, the police.
We've had a few, we've had a few.
The police will go and, you know, it's non-confrontational, just, you know, do you wanna let you know what your child said? Do you have weapons in your home, does your child have access to weapons? And it's, if nothing else, it lets families and kids know how serious it is when you, when you make comments like that.
Yeah, great.
Parents are brought in for a conversation.
Yep.
Your present women, please appear.
Awesome, thank you.
I'd rather go overboard than underreport anything.
And it's writ, written into ALMA, which reported into ALMA, so we have a doc, we have documentation.
Great, that's it, thank you.
That's it.
Okay.
Uh, public comments?
Patricia?
Good.
Uh, promotion order now, public under NHRS A ninety-one eight-three-two, small letters. Uh, K and C.
L. So moved.
Second.
By Gigi, seconded by Andy, requires roll call, Andy?
Hi.
Hi, yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is seven forty-six. So you can please.
Thank you.
Not running, just moving quickly.
If I unplug it by accident again, it could.
Let me stop the thing first.
Let's do it, let's do it.